Would we, I would do the pledge of allegiance, would you do the independent?
I'd defer to you on that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, bless us in our deliberations. Give us the time and energy to fulfill a promise to the people of Jasper County that we will improve their roads. Amen.
Okay, Mr. Jim, it's all yours.
It's my dog and pony show, huh?
Yep.
Good morning.
Morning.
We have done our request for qualifications, and in that request for qualifications, this group was supportive of selecting Infrastructure Consulting Engineers LLC. Their acronym is ICE, but because of what's going on in the nation, I'll call them consultant. And so, we have worked with them to try to develop a contract, and that contract was developed upon the scope of work that was in the RFQ. And it was also developed in discussion with them, some things that might be missing that we want to address and make sure that we do upfront. And we wanted to make sure that we were flexible enough in the contract terms so that we could add and subtract projects as this committee thought was wise, and so that county council could also have ease in the contract so that every little thing didn't have to come to them. So, in this proposed contract, there are some things that we have a definite price for, based on things that we know right now and are going to be just hardcore. We know this is going to take this many hours to do this task. Then, then we have some things based on projects, whether we do five projects in the first five years or 15 projects, it's going to change the cost of the consulting and the program management. So, I believe there are, we assumed that we were going to deal with 12 projects as part of this contract in the first five years. And in looking at it, we determined that we needed a not-to-exceed fee of $8.95 million for the program management in the first five years. That's about 2.4% of the total program cost during that first five years. If you said, hey, this is going to be a 15-year project, and you extend those out, you're going to be in the seven, just over the 7%. But again, there's some front-loaded things in this operation that need to be stood up quickly, and then over time, those costs will be much less. So, we're figuring, I'm figuring that we're going to be in that 6.1 area for program management for the life of this 15-year program, and I think that fits right into some other sales tax programs out there in South Carolina. So, that's kind of where we're at. What I'm asking this body to do is to recommend to county council that this contract that we've come up with is fair and reasonable. I believe it's fair and reasonable. I think it is, it is not bargain basement, but it's not Taj Mahal pricing. I think it's a very reasonable contract, and we're going to get a lot of value for the money that we're going to spend. We do have the consultant here with us to answer questions, specific questions, if I can't answer them.
The reason I had this meeting was to, it's going before county council on September 2nd, essentially?
Yes, sir, this contract approval.
Right, contract approval. We're going to have a meeting on the 25th about this also, just to go over it. And I want to be very clear that when we do this, we don't have the municipalities there. And that's why I brought it through this organization or committee, just to make sure that the municipalities are aware of it and what they're doing, and they have the idea to answer a question. So, if you would, could we hear from the managers? Introduce yourself and just tell us what you...
Yes, sir. Hi, my name is Jeff Buckeloo. I work for Infrastructure Consulting and Engineering. I'm based over in Bluffton. I used to work at the town of Hilton Head for 20-some years. I was town engineer. Went to work for this great company a few years ago. We have an excellent team. We've assembled a few of the other folks I'll introduce here. Les...
Yeah, Les Mikechik. I'm the chief administrative officer and general counsel for Ice. I so-called Ice. Prior to that, I was a deputy supervisor at Berkeley County for five years, and as part of my duties as deputy supervisor, I ran the transportation program. I actually hired ICE when I was a deputy supervisor, and they helped me run the program there. We were one of the most, I dare say, one of the most successful programs in the state of South Carolina for sales tax programs. We actually completed or got into construction every project on our list in our seven-year referendum, so pretty proud of that. I've had a lot of experience in all the, from your side, of working through these, these types of programs, and they get really complex really quickly.
And also, we have Leland Colvin, formerly of SC DOT, he's with the firm now.
Hey, Leland Colvin, I'm our vice president for special projects. As Jeff said, I retired from SC DOT as the deputy secretary for engineering, so had the opportunity in that position to really touch all the sales tax programs across the state. Congratulations to Jasper on the moving forward with the sales tax program. Look forward to working with the county. I've worked with Andy and Josh and Mr. Armstrong, when he was at Charleston County, so very familiar with the sales tax programs across the state and kind of what works, maybe some areas for improvement, and look forward to working with the county on this, Mr. Jim.
And Brian McElwee's here. He was formerly with the town of Hilton Head and town of Bluffton, served as town engineer over there as well. So, yeah, what, we're very, very excited for this program and this project, and, and we have a strong presence here in the area. We just won the contract for CEI, that's Construction Engineering Inspection on the I-95 widening. We have a contract, Hardyville contracts with Bluffton, Hilton Head, Beaufort County, et cetera. So, we are locked into this area and very excited about the projects and program. And when we won it, and Jim had the scope, as I said, we amended it a little bit. We added some things we thought were necessary and went through the major tasks, and we developed a blended rate, tried to get hourly rates who we thought would be, would this be top-heavy or medium-range heavy during what year of the program? So, we developed these average blended rates. We estimated hours based on the scope and based on the number of projects we thought we could get moving within the first five years. We assumed 12, it could be eight, it could be 15. Like I say, we will prioritize the projects early on with the guidance and help of this committee, and then vet the projects, flesh them out, and as we go out for consulting services, we'll have a better idea of what those costs are going to be and how many we can do. But as I said, we compared rates, we looked at other counties, other programs, do those counties and programs have in-house staffing to manage more of, you know, what is the situation here? This scope is heavily dependent on the consultants to do, you know, a lot of the work. And so, yeah, we talked with Jim and county staff a few meetings, and we think it's fair and reasonable. And if you don't need it, you won't use it, right? These are not-to-exceed allowances. So, if the price does seem high, please, please keep that in mind that, yes, if county staff directs, we don't need to do this much, then we won't do that much. But these are just conservative not-to-exceed amounts in case we need that amount over the five years.
Mr. Mayor?
First of all, I'd like to note that, you know, it took me a lot of time to read all 144 pages of the contract. It seems okay. I didn't. But at any rate, as they said, they do have been doing business with the city of Hardyville. I've had the pleasure of working with Leland along with Andy on Exit 3, in his former role. So, I'm confident in this selection. Do have a couple of questions. The 8.9 million over the first five years, based on what we anticipate to do, Jim, will we have to bond any of that to get them started?
Again, we don't, we don't know those numbers yet. Part of the program manager is going to help us through those. I think we have some information coming today about the first quarter of revenues that have come in.
Right.
And again, we have not dived into that. Part of the program manager's job is to help us figure that out, and we will be having some meetings at the county level about bonding and availability that Andy is trying to set up here over the next month or so.
The reason I ask, this committee has identified Argent Boulevard to be the top priority. And I think we all recognize that we don't, we know how much money we've set aside for, but we have no idea what even can be done in terms of making Argent Boulevard a safer road. So, I'm anxious, and I know the constituents of Hardyville are very anxious to start at least designing what that need is. So, if we need to, my recommendation to this committee and to county council, if we need to get money rolling, and if that requires a small bond, I'm all in favor of it. Let's get moving as soon as possible.
I know that the consultant understands the importance of Argent. They have provided some documents already of how they might try to address that. But again, we really need to get them under contract so that we can start developing a plan, not only for Argent, but for the entire program.
Right.
This is the first step.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Mayor. I do have, and this may seem like a question, stupid question, but what do they do? What is the planning, what is this? And this is for, I understand, I think I understand what it is, but this is, we're trying to be very transparent in what things are. Make it simple. So, the citizens of Jasper County have given us a prize, a gift in this. So, can you explain what they do in terms that are easy to understand?
So do. Get a construction company out on Argent Boulevard to start moving dirt and to build a final product, there are a lot of steps that need to happen. We talked about it just now. There's a financial step to it. Do we have the money to do that? How do we get the money to do this? The program manager will help us determine that, how much is needed, and making sure that it's spent wisely. Once we have that funding and know that funding, we have to get a contractor under contract, of course. All right? Argent Boulevard is a South Carolina jurisdictional road, so we have to play by SC DOT's rules. And so, the program manager will help us make sure that we're following the rules so that we don't run afoul and end up doing things two or three times and spending more money by doing it two or three times. We're going to do it the first time, and we're going to do it right the first time, and the program manager is going to help us do that, which is ultimately going to save money. They're going to help us evaluate and get RFQ's Request for Qualifications out to get an engineer to do the actual design. And then, a lot of times, for public works projects, like a road project, internal county staff would be reviewing that to make sure everything is okay. Well, our internal county staff right now is one, that would be me. And so, we need a lot of help to make sure that the consultant that is doing the design and coming up with those construction documents are doing it properly and according to what Jasper County Council and Jasper County public wants the project to be. So, I think that's kind of the overview of what they'll be doing for us. There's a lot of steps, making sure utilities are not affected, making sure that if there's right-of-way needed, that we go through the proper right-of-way process and that we acquire that right-of-way in a appropriate manner. So, there's a lot of steps that make this whole thing up. And again, we need help from the Jasper County staff to do this work, and that's what the program manager will help us do.
Mr. Chairman, if I might.
Yes.
There's one other important aspect of what we can bring, and that is coordination with other agencies to help find money to supplement your sales tax dollars. So, we, we've got a lot of contacts, and we are able to coordinate with the COG, get federal money, get some state money where appropriate to supplement and to leverage your sales tax dollars. So, that's, that's one important thing that may not be on the paper, but that's one of the things that we do. Leland, can you speak more to that?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I think, just like Jim had indicated, I think, you know, there will be a separate engineer that designs...
Would you excuse me? Come to the microphone.
No.
I'm sorry.
It's better because we're being filmed, and if the public wants to review this, it'll get you on tape.
Hopefully, the council will also be looking at this.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, opportunity to speak. I think, just what Jim said, I think it's the overall project management of laying out as we get the revenues and laying out how we start projects, laying out the design schedule, the right-of-acquisition schedule, the permitting schedule, and utility coordination. Also, part of the contract is the, the project management firm will actually go out there and acquire the right-of-way necessary to do these roadway improvements. We'll also do all the utility coordination and help with those utilities, getting them relocated, do the permitting, and then a big piece of the puzzle, once those plans are ready to go to construction, we'll handle the construction letting and receive bids and be able to make a recommendation to Jim on the, or those projects to those contractors. And then, as Les said earlier, there's also other potential federal funds that could be applied to these projects. The biggest ones would be the NPO and the COG here in the Low Country, and seeing how you can partner with Low Country, COG and the NPO to try to find those funds. If we do put federal funds on the project, there are some federal hoops we have to jump through from an environmental standpoint, Uniform Act on the right-of-acquisition, and the Davis taking, Wait Rate Act, which we'll have to do as well, and also determine if there's any DB goals we need to add to the project. So, we'll help Jim and the county kind of navigate through those. Also, as Jim mentioned, I think the majority of the roads are on the DOT system, and working through that, reviewed by the DOT from a design standpoint, and then also the construction inspection, to assume that all the, all the material that's put in that project meets the DOT standards and specs as it will be in the construction contract.
And one more thing, just want to make, make clear, everyone understands this, but public information is a big component. We have an expert subconsultant working for us, a public relations firm, and so, early on, they're going to stand up a website, and we're going to be transparent on how we're going through, where the money's going, the, the project status and schedules. So, I think that's a big element. You folks would appreciate us, as we get the word out to the public.
Actually, that was my next question, is how we, how do we project this? We're learning from past mistakes, that we've got to be forward on this, go right after it, be aggressive, so people know where their money's being spent.
That public-facing program is one of the things that we're going to stand up early. And again, that's one of those expenses that will be high to start with, and then, once it's in place, it will kind of just become a maintenance item. But again, that's why that initial percentage is a little bit higher in the first five years.
Would that be a part of the county website, or would that be a separate standalone? Do you know?
We will work that out, and again, I think that's in coordination with our IT part and how we do it. It might be, could be either one.
I would like to have it where we could attach it to Hardyville and to Ridgeland, to their websites.
We will definitely have it linked. I don't know if we will end up hosting it on our site or not.
Okay. I thank you very much. Is there any other?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
We've had conversations at previous meetings about whether to make this a local project or a federal project, and that we discussed that getting federal money has, as you call, hoops to go through. At what point do we determine that is, will, I'm going to call you TICE, Transportation ICE. I think that's nicer. But at any rate, what, do, do they help us determine what the best course is, whether it's a local project or a federal project?
Yes, I, the consultant, TICE.
You've just changed your name.
That, that is one of the things that, that will be determined early. Again, we know what this priority is of the first six projects. And again, we will, we will work on those priorities, and again, making that determination of what funding we're going to use is going to be one of those very first things that we have to figure out, because we can't, if we say we're going to do it one way, if we say we're not going to use federal funds, and all of a sudden come in and say we are, we pretty much have to start over. And again, we don't want to waste money in doing things twice. So, we're going to be very deliberate in how we determine that, make sure that this group and county council is on the same page, whatever way we're going, and then, once we have that decision, we will move forward.
Are all six of the top projects, are they possible for federal projects?
Yes.
Any other question?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Foljum, could you just give us a little insight into the county, how they, what's going to work with the county, in the administration of it?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, first of all, you mentioned Mrs. Schaefer dealing with the green belt side. She will not be here today. She's not on the agenda. You may remember, you had a marathon session with Miss Schaefer back in May, and I think we received all the information we needed from the advisory committee to form the ordinance that will go before the county council. I think it was somewhat aggressive, we set the agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Right.
The September 2nd meeting yesterday, thinking perhaps that ordinance for the green belt would be, would be ready for the 2nd for first reading. I worked on it last night a little bit, it is not. So, I think we're going to have to wait until the 15th to have that, that surface. So, I just wanted to let you know that, that timeline is working along. This is all Mr. Wanake's day here. This is the road section to go forward. We will, Mr. Chairman, take this in steps, as Jim has indicated. Once these folks are on board with the contract, they've been very delightful, they're pleasant gentlemen, and they give a lot of free advice, but they really want to be under contract to get started. And so, once hopefully they're under contract after September 2nd, we'll start digging into that advice, Mr. Mayor, that you, that you want, and the schedule of how to move forward. In the meantime, I've been working with Mr. Skinner on the collections, and also looking back, someday we'll do that for you, on a review of the 2016 transportation sales tax, where we stand with that. We still have leftover funds there as well. So, he's prepared to give you, Mr. Skinner's prepared to give you a report on the collections. And then, we were having, on the 28th of August, we're having a meeting potentially with the ICE folks, Jim, the whole crowd, to talk with our bond council about where we see ourselves now, getting ahead of it early, what our intentions are, and also with our financial advisor being part of that meeting. So, they will be giving us the financial advice about when to pull the trigger on the bonding. And so, we think all of that's going to collide here, here in the fall, and we should know much better in about the next 60 days where we're heading.
Just one other thing, I guess, I don't know, it's for everybody. We have this committee right now. How often do you think the committee should be meeting? Or...
Mr. Chairman, if I could, that, I think that's also going to depend on the green belt portion and what you agree to look at, applications, I think, quarterly, right? So, I'm not sure what the norm is for, for these guys and how that'll work, but I would anticipate that you're going to meet more often than they're, they're used to, providing reports, which is a good thing. But keep in mind, the green belt portion and applications, you, you will be, if the council approves the ordinance, you will be the green belt advisory committee as well.
Right. So, we don't know until we know.
Yes, sir. I'm afraid that's the answer.
Okay, that's about what it is.
I guess my thought is, early on, we're probably going to need monthly meetings as we start standing things up to run by this, this group, and then, as time goes on, that, that need will be less. But I would anticipate here, over the first six, nine months, that we want to meet regularly with you, and I would see that being once a month or so. Okay?
Just another, I guess, how we work it. Once we do that, does the county get involved with the individual projects, or does it remain here?
Again, I, I think it will be update here, and I think it's update to you, update to the public, and then, update to council. There might not be a lot of action being taken, but again, if we are going to be transparent to our public, we want to make sure that we give them a regular update of what's going on. And again, some people don't like getting on the website, some looking at it, some people would just rather have it told, and so, that's why I said, I think as we're standing this up and working through these processes, we, we need that regular contact. And when things become routine, might be a little bit different in the future.
Well, what I was saying is, we have here have authorized, we're looking at Argent Boulevard 278 as two major first steps. Does that have to be okayed by the council? Ah, by the council? That's what I'm trying. How, 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 how does that work? Just so we know.
As long as the council has that same policy direction, they're going to receive your, your recommendation of those as being the priorities, both the town and the city have provided resolutions.
So, it has to be a resolution to do...
And you've had discussed with your colleagues about that, so I think you, you would approve the contract if these folks work, and we can work on a resolution for the council that incorporates the two other resolutions, stating what your priorities are. incorporates the two other resolutions, stating what your priorities are, and then, there won't be any more permissions required from the council.
Right, that's what I was trying to say.
Just updates, period.
Okay. Yes.
I thought last week, when we were at the I-95 ceremony, they had, in order to keep the public aware, there was a QR code that took them right to a regular update. I think that would be a great idea. Josh, do you think, I think for all three jurisdictions, that would be a good idea? Is there, maybe our staff could work with the county and get that set up? And that way, because not everybody's going to come on and watch this, you know, riveting meeting, but if they have a QR code, they could go right in and at any time see at least what the schedule is and what's, what the updates are.
I think I will speak for our team right now, as that's part of what we're talking about with the communications team, to help stand that up and let us work on that from this program management side, rather than having our staffs do that, because again, I think that's part of the reason we hired the consultant, is to help stand those things up so that we can free up our time, so that our employees can do the other needed work they need to do for our citizens.
Mayor, I'll tell you, that's one of the, probably one of the best reasons why I think we should be working with this firm, is so many of them understand the importance of communicating with the public, having been in civil servant roles, and so I'm confident that we can work with the team to make sure that we've got that out there as a standalone page, dashboard, whatever takes the form of.
Thank you.
Are you finished?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Until something else comes up.
And last, Mr. Skinner, would you come up and give us a report? I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Hi, fellas. Got some numbers for you. I guess these are the important numbers everybody's asking for, so I'll spit them out to you and give you a feel for what we've gotten, and kind of a look ahead at what we can anticipate. We've got the, what I eloquently call the old penny and the new penny. Under the old penny, I believe it was 2016, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
We have accumulated a little bit there, and we've got it, I've got it scrolled away and a little bit into L-Gip and into the bank accounts. Twenty-eight million, seven twenty-nine, five sixteen, and eighty-nine cents. That is sitting there, that is accumulating a little bit of money, ready to go. I'll leave that where it goes up to you guys. I'll just tell you two. The new collections, it started, we got the fourth quarter, we got the first new bit of money for the new penny tax, eight hundred and twenty-four thousand, what's about that? The deposit that we got, eight hundred and thirty, twenty-three, ninety-one cents is what we have in that account right now. So it looks like the average, and that was only for May and June, that was a two-month average, so we will be getting those quarterly, so it should be right around that. Once we get the next quarter in, I will definitely let you all know exactly what we're getting per quarter and projected going forward. We did get a little bit of the old penny tax still going, we're getting dribs and drabs of that, I'm not quite sure how. I did get a number from the Department of Revenue for one thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty-five cents is still coming from that penny tax, the old penny tax. So, it comes in one big lump sum, so I've got to actually pull it apart and make sure it is in different silos for us to use. And again, how we use those, I'll leave that up to smarter minds. I'll just tell you where it's at and how much you got. Mr. Mayor.
Mike, you mentioned it was twenty-eight point five million that we collected from 2016.
Twenty-eight point seven.
Pardon?
Twenty-eight point seven.
Twelve point seven.
Yes, sir.
But we spent some of that. What's actually in the bank?
That is what is in the bank. As far as collection goes on, I'm remiss. We collected more than that. We had around, what, thirty million, I think?
I thought we, yeah, I thought we.
It was thirty million.
It was a thirty million collection, because in case we bonded it, that was for interest, and it was a twenty-seven million dollars worth of projects, as I recall. Am I right, Andy?
Yes, sir. You're right. That's right.
So, we still have twenty-eight point seven in the bank, and then, we have to give three and a half million for exit three upfront?
Yes, sir. We've already done that, out of that.
And we had spent some other projects, I know, in Hardyville and Ridgeland.
Yes, sir.
So we, and we still have twenty-eight million?
And you have about, I believe, about seventeen million still obligated, out of the twenty-eight. But yes, sir, that's what the interest has done for us since 2016.
Wow. That's good news.
Yes, sir.
Great.
Kim, with that bonding, we now can change what we use that for, right?
You can. You had two different ordinances, the first one in 2016 establishing that, and then you went back a couple of years later after some projects that changed and redistributed or reallocated the funds in different projects, wanting to include exit three, which was not a regional project.
So we could actually, whatever the bonding is going to be, we could bond it through ourselves or use twenty-eight million?
See, as soon as you tell them. Yes, sir. Yes, sir, you could. Keep in mind, we do have a little over seven million dollars obligated currently for the exit twenty-one project. It's very important to attend regional, another, close to a million to work on some, work on 278 just outside of town regional, and then about, about ten million, Mr. Mayor, your mark for the interchange exit three.
So, okay, we have twenty-eight million dollars to use, or we, there's, how much obligated out of that, twenty-eight million?
I'm going to say there's about fourteen million dollars obligated. I think I said thirteen previously, I think it's around.
So half of it, we have fourteen million dollars that we can, we have to spend.
I think that's right. I want to go back with Mr. Skinner from that, but I believe so.
We have, Andy, we have, we had committed thirteen and a half million dollars to exit three, which we had to put three and a half of that upfront.
Yes, sir.
So that leaves ten obligated for that, and then, exit twenty-one, how much do we have obligated?
You have, I'm sorry, you have seven million totally obligated. To date, three hundred and fourteen thousand roughly has been spent on engineering, because they wanted to do some items at that exit through an IGA with DOT. So you've got about six point eight.
So we have roughly obligated rounding up about seventeen million, giving us about eleven and a half million unobligated. I think, once we get set up on the website, these numbers are important. You've seen what happened in Beaufort when there's a lot of negativity, when they didn't know what was spent from the previous sales tax. So putting that out is.
Yes, sir. At a subsequent meeting, let me put together a presentation for you to go through.
Okay.
One additionally, that I'm looking at an old piece of paper from months ago, but one of the additional ones that the council did, which was important, was we teamed with Beaufort County to do the improvements on 170, five different interchanges.
Right.
City Hardyville kicked in, I think, half a million dollars for that project, and we kicked in another million. So there's another million that's all.
Is that done?
Yes, sir.
That, the money we all tipped in for all those projects is done, right?
Yes, sir. So I can go through those older projects and the status of each and our funds, Mayor, for you.
This is just, this money we're talking about now is excess from interest and all that, is that correct?
That's correct. In 2016, you did, you exercised PEGO, it was your first one you ever did, so there was no bonding, and so, that money's just been drawing interest. And incidentally, Mayor, the three point five that went into escrow for DOT to work on exit three, which is roughly about half of that has been spent.
And there was, Mr. Chairman, your question, there was X millions of dollars devoted to exit eight improvements, but DOT has included that as part of their widening project. So those monies were not, they were, didn't have to be used for that project, and that's part of the excess unaccounted for money or uncommitted to the money.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just to remind you, while we were thinking about projects, money also went into the Hardyville Commerce Park Road.
Right.
From 2016, and also, you draw by memory the Medical Center Drive and 278 improvements.
Right.
All along in there. So that money did, was a great source to leverage for these larger projects. Incidentally, both those projects, as far as the transportation sales tax was concerned, were under budget.
I think we're, we're learning from Beaufort that we have to make sure that we're spending the money and the projects are going forward, rather than just holding the money, we have twenty-eight million dollars and we haven't done anything with it. We've done a lot with it, and this is just.
Mr. Chairman, I'll tell you, the ten million dollars dedicated to exit three allowed exit three to move forward.
Correct.
It's the best of both worlds. It's a portion that allowed that project to move forward, all the other sources of money, we had to show that we had the money, but we've also been able to capture the interest on it before we spent it.
Right.
So that's the best of both worlds. Although we haven't spent it, if we didn't have it, we wouldn't have exit three.
Correct.
Right. But that's similar to, Beaufort County had, what, a hundred and twenty million dollars committed to the bridge, and people were complaining that the money wasn't spent, but it was committed to for a specific project. We don't want to have that negativity come forward when we all know that the money is there for a specific purpose, just wait for the project to begin. But it's that misconception of the public that we want to try to avoid.
Do you have any, Mr. Mayor?
No, sir.
Do you have any more, then, Treger?
No, I'm.
That's it, thank you very much. Appreciate it. If you could, maybe if, when you see us with a meeting, well, could you just give us an update on where the money's coming in? You don't have to be here if you want to be here, that's fine, but if you, just give us a report.
Absolutely.
So, is there any other thing that we would like to talk about, Mr. Mayor?
No, I'm just looking at the agenda.
Okay, set time for next meeting. Do we have a set of time, or do we want to wait until after we go through the council?
I think if we're going to meet every month, it's better for my calendar if we start setting the schedule, because, so I don't have conflicts.
Yeah. Okay.
And I'm out through the 24th of September.
How about the 29th? Or the 30th? One of the two?
So, it's going to take us a while, again, if we start this in September. Let's, let's see if we can't keep September open, and let's set something for October. Let, give us, give us a couple, six, four to six weeks to start working on something. If we have a meeting in September, I'm afraid I won't have much to share with you. So if we can look at October.
October 17th? Is that, you?
That should be found in the, yes, sir. 10:00 AM.
10:00 AM in Ridgeland. Is that okay with you?
Yes, I'm open. That's good for me.
I thank you very much. Is there anything to discuss? Mr. Mayor? The mayor?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I thank you, everyone, for showing up. Appreciate it. We're all doing good for the county. Thank you very much.
I'm making the most of your adjournments.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.